Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 2, 2022, meeting of the Southampton Village Planning Board. This is a combination public meeting, public hearing and work session. However, we have no public hearings scheduled for tonight. So we'll jump right into the...
Move that we open the meeting. Do we have to move that we open the meeting?
Yes.
I will make a motion that we open the meeting.
Can we get...
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have it.
So we'll go right into the subdivision reviews. The first one, I'll just review this. 550-554 Hill Street is adjourned to May 16, which is our next meeting. The public for 99 Sanford LLC, public hearing is closed. And let me just check my notes here. Okay, so we're waiting for the...
So we're looking for some input from the board. If you'd like, we can have a resolution updated for the next meeting for discussion. Between Alice and myself, we can update that.
Okay.
Are we talking about Sanford Place?
Yes.
We can take action on Sanford Place?
Not tonight, but I think we need to give our consultants some direction as far as getting the paper...
Preparing decision, yes.
So the zoning board has said we can make a decision?
So the zoning board did not approve the request for a special exception for residential use. So this is an updated sketch plan approval for the office.
This is for the...
For the subdivision without mention of use.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just...
So it's blank?
It's just for splitting the...
Thanks.
Properties.
Sorry, I was just making sure.
Are they going back in front of the ZDA to find out if they can? I thought that that might have been part of the plan.
So that's not part of our... I don't know.
Not our purview, but is it... Are they going back in front of the ZDA?
Not that I know of.
They challenged the zoning board determination. They filed an Article 78, so there is litigation pending against the zoning board.
Okay.
Okay, so nothing's...
So do we wait until that's determined before we do anything else?
The way I understand it, Alice...
No, that doesn't require review.
Regardless of the use, we can still approve or disapprove the subdivision.
Okay.
And then it's...
It made a new application to the board, and they have a right to do that. So we should review the application that's before us.
Okay. So the only thing that I would suggest is that if the board wants to go ahead with a decision, that they submit a subdivision map that does not show the improvements on it, that shows the existing improvements, but not the proposed future improvements. And so that way, it's very clear that it's the lots, not a site plan for the... That would be the western lot. But that can be a condition.
And Alice, there's... If the subdivision did get approved, that has no bearing at all on future use issues, right? They have a right to subdivide that land, and that's what we're to decide.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly. We're just approving the subdivision of the land, not the use.
Okay.
But the size requirements wouldn't be different for commercial and residential on the subdivision, right?
Yes, we're commercial.
Right.
Residential's up to someone, but we don't deal with residential. We just deal with the site, and they do what they want. But you're right.
Yeah, but no, I'm just saying, well, their minimum lot requirements are met for the subdivision that's in front of us, even if they were successful in their Article 78. It wouldn't affect what we were doing.
You're actually right to keep us informed.
Okay, yeah, no, I just wanted to...
I'm with you.
I just wanted to...
No, that's a good point.
Make sure there were no implications if, for whatever reason, they came back later.
And the lot's only big enough for a micro home, is what you're saying? Okay. Okay, so everybody is... Is everyone satisfied with the understanding of 99 Sanford Place? So number three is Harry Theodaropolis. Theodaropolis at 89 Halsey Neck Lane. So this is the final subdivision application. So I think maybe for Willa and Lisa, I don't know if they were on the board when this was before us. Maybe just a quick recap. There's no proof of Harry, as you see being public hearing. This is a parcel on Halsey Neck Lane that is large enough to be subdivided into two parcels. And the applicant isn't looking to take any action right now, but to subdivide it for possible future use. And we reviewed that pretty well. There are wetlands issues, but all of it is set up as those would be contingencies to a new development. Okay.
So there was one item that had come up on the original plot that was submitted. The lot, well, it was called Lot 1 last time. It's now Lot 2, the northern lot. What's called now an existing one for a single-family residence was shown as a guest house. And it wasn't clear from the map how big that was. If it really was a real... Was it a home? Or was it more of a guest cottage without a kitchen facility, without more bulk of components of a house? This actually now has been updated to show it as an existing single-family residence. It is big enough, it's a house. The other one is a larger house. That may have been what threw us off, but it wasn't scaled, or it wasn't shown as square footage. It wasn't shown previously. Does have a common sanitary system. It does have... It does need setbacks for principal residents. And so it could serve as a single-family home on that lot.
So my question was, now that this is a separate parcel from being a combined parcel from the past, does the sanitary system need to comply with the new systems that Southampton wants everyone to update?
Right, and it will as soon as they take a building permit out on this, once this is conveyed to another owner. This would need to be upgraded, but they could keep it this way as it is. They have a... They got the health department to sign off on subdivision map. They don't necessarily need to have a new sanitary system until they go to upgrade. They're not taking a building permit out on anything on this lot yet. So there's nothing to trigger a new sanitary system.
Except that it's a new parcel.
Yeah, I don't think... I don't know, Alice, have you come into this before? It's a new one, so...
No, that's not one of the triggers for a sanitary upgrade.
So the building perimeter only is the trigger? On any property that... Where the septic system is in the wetlands?
The sanitary system is at least 200 feet from the wetlands. There is a existing sanitary system for the pool cabana. It looks like it might be just a single pool. That is within 150 feet of the wetlands boundary. You know, that may not have been approved for them now. But it's not great if it's used a lot, but there's nothing that triggers them to, you know, upgrade it.
Okay, so... Should we go... I mean, should we schedule a public hearing for June 6?
So that is timely. It can be scheduled for June 6, and then I will send out a referral for a South Hampton planning commission. Otherwise, the other requirements have been met, or they don't apply in this case.
And we have to vote on scheduling the public hearing, correct? Okay.
So a move that we schedule a public hearing. And in order to give adequate notice, I gather, it has to be as late as the 6th of June for 2177 for the Theodaropolis Division at 689 Halsey Neck Lane.
I'll second it.
We can't hear Alan. Maybe something's over the microphone, is it possible? Alice, I see you're struggling to hear him as well, right?
What about that?
I don't know, but it's on.
Is it on?
Yes, I can hear you. I just... We're really struggling to hear you. Could you repeat that? Because we actually did not catch it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm proposing a motion that we approve scheduling a public hearing on 6th of June in order to give adequate timing for it for 2177, which is the application for subdivision by Harry Theodaropolis for 689 Halsey Neck Lane.
I'll second that.
Aye.
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 Okay. I didn't know if it had to be called by the secretary.
Yeah.
Okay, approved.
The ayes have it.
The ayes have it. 51 Pond Lane is still adjourned to July 5, nothing for discussion tonight. Number five, 71 Hill Street. Pleading through the plans, we have the 21st, 32nd, and 23rd detailed response letter, right?
Okay.
Well, I started reading that memo the entire...
So we... Was it 71 Hill Street?
Yes.
Yeah, so we actually didn't get through everything on 71 Hill Street. But there are, you know, 28 pages and force your response to the... So we're working our way through it. We did notice a few things. We noticed that there were some inconsistencies between the architect's plans and the engineer's plans.
Like what?
The one that we noticed was the lean-to that's missing on the...
The lean-to over the STP?
For the STP.
And it's on the engineering plans?
But it's on the... It's on one of the other plans, but it's not on that overall site plan. So it doesn't, you know, the calculations for, you know, coverage wouldn't have included it.
Coverage doesn't matter anyway.
Yeah, it is.
What?
It would comply, yeah.
Yeah, it's good. So, but you want the calculation for coverage?
I actually would wait on, you know, because we have... We're working our way through them. I mean, I feel like so much has been addressed, but there are just, you know, there's a couple of things that stood out.
I'm just anxious to hear what it is that you have identified.
Yeah, I have two different people working on it, so... See if I can find the other inconsistency that was. I think it might have been for one of the surveys and the site plan. I'll have to get back to you, because it's going to waste everybody's time. But there were other items, if you want, I can kind of go through this.
Sure.
The proposed workforce housing. We need to identify a mechanism for, I guess, administration of the workforce housing, and that hasn't been done yet, and I don't know that that's the applicant's job to do. It is something that we need to figure out as a village, who is going to track that.
Well, you can track it however you want, but why would certainly be an owner's... The owner's going to be the one in the first instance betting the leases and the rent.
Right.
I mean, so...
So administering it on the village's side, then that would just seem to be something that's figured out as far as...
But that shouldn't hold us up.
No.
Can I just... May I say something?
That's the chair.
She's the applicant.
Yeah, do you want to finish first, or do you want to join up together?
In terms of the administration of the workforce, I have to get that.
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, D.D. Godhelp, 71 Hill Street Managing Partner. Thank you. Just for the record, I just want to be sure we all understand that there were two workforce housing units. It's a quid pro quo for getting Varadian Way, which was going to be part of the 1 and 1/4 acres of green space. We do not have Varadian Way, but we do have now four workforce housing units that have been imposed on this project. I'd like to submit as many units as potentially the village latched. I mean, I think we should do the same thing as what our neighbors are doing. Nevertheless, I don't want to go back to the village board of trustees. But what kind of administration would the Southampton Planning Board require? What kind of instructions as to how ownership should be allowed to monitor, manage, lease up, repair, maintain workforce housing units with quotes around workforce?
It's not that the planning board would be required to have involvement after site plan approval, but that would need to be something that's worked out before a site plan is approved or as a condition of site plan approval, because this is something that was a condition of the approval by the board of trustees, that those remain as workforce housing units.
Right. They are not workforce housing units right now.
Remain in perpetuity. I mean, that they are proposed, you're going to build them, and that, you know, that there's some way to enforce or show that this is going to happen over time, that they are maintained as...
Okay, in perpetuity, they need to be maintained as workforce housing units where there's some entity as not yet established within the village that's going to ascertain how we're going to lease up, manage before we can get site plan approval? Am I saying that correctly? As a condition of site plan approval? Ah, okay, thank you very much.
I kind of think that's actually...
It's actually not your... It needs to be worked out by the village, not necessarily the village's planning board, right?
Not as a condition of site plan approval.
Okay.
I don't think. I mean, it's specifically a board of trustees prerogative under the law.
So when should it happen then?
Well, I'll consent with the village attorney about it then, and we can table this discussion.
I just... Why is it such a contentious issue?
Because we're... I'm afraid... It's only contentious because we're trying to avoid continued delay. And if we're kicking the ball back and forth between different boards, we're waiting to go to ZDA, we're waiting to go this month. We have to wait for somebody to pay. I mean, I'm not trying to be contentious, I'm trying to move it along.
Okay.
Oh, I'm not sure I understood actually the first part of that, because was it a condition with getting Varadian Way that was then dropped? Or is it a condition...
Going way back before our application, there had originally been a proposal. There were many different proposals, but there had been proposal from the applicant to provide a certain number of... And I don't want to get too deep into the weeds, of workforce housing units. And part of the overall proposal was the greening up of Varadian Way, the abandonment of Varadian Way by the village. And so that didn't happen. You know, the terms of the proposal morphed along the way. So as it became bigger, that certain things were not going to happen on the village's part.
Okay, but it's still a requirement that's linked to have the housing.
The special exception was granted by the board of trustees for workforce housing and for a resort hotel.
Okay. And is the idea that the village will monitor the program or administer, or that's what's being worked out?
Yeah, it's just how, you know, because you need to track whether the people that are renting are income-eligible.
Yeah.
And you don't have it being rented out. You had proposed that you would have at least one-year leases or one-year leases in your response. So that's good, it's not going to be rented out on a monthly basis. And somebody is tracking that. There's just no... We don't have that set up right now, so we can definitely table this and...
And Terry Mohn has done thousands of special needs workforce low-income housing in New York City, which is of course not Southampton Village, but without having a mechanism in place, the intent is to provide, in fact, more. We're going to the ZDA to see whether we can convert more of the top floor into year-round rental housing. I believe we need that, I'd love to see that. But without having a mechanism, I know in New York it's done through certifications, tax credits, through other kinds of affidavits. And I've been there, done that, apologize, but maybe 10, 12 years ago, I tried to provide 10 units of housing with Bond &amp; Cannon and was told I could only do it if I relinquished control over every aspect of the renovations and lease up and ongoing management to somebody who doesn't exist anymore. So it's complicated.
Yeah, and there's a lot of history to this.
Yes, thank you very much.
Understood. For that I ask, because...
I do, I mean, you're pro-housing, but you're also so eager to begin before interest rates are 12% and inflation on construction materials is 76% higher. Thank you.
So in our defense, we're doing the best we can. We got them, you know, it's only been a couple of weeks, and there are extensive plans here. So, and we do are, you know, we have limited staff to go through all these applications. So we're doing the best we can, we're not trying to delay this in any way.
Thank you very much.
So one of the items is that if there are any existing street trees, and I was going to swing by there on my way today, but I didn't get here in time. If there are any existing street trees that are going to be removed, then that needs to be noted, that is one thing.
So we listed the ones that were going to stay.
Are there any street trees that are going to be removed? That exist?
Street trees? Trees along the front of those.
Which are...
Which are village-owned trees? We don't have any plans to remove any village-owned trees. We have no plans to remove any village-owned trees.
There is one tree that's very unwell. We would like either the village or us to have someone take a look at it. It's split all the way down its bark.
And that's within the right of way?
Yes.
And it's proposed to remain at this point?
We have no plans to remove, only to...
I mean... And the plans say that? Street tree to remain, street tree to remain?
Right, right.
Okay.
So it wasn't clear if to the person who reviewed this that there weren't any that were remaining to be removed. So that was the clarification.
And how many are removed that aren't... How many are going to be removed that are not street trees? Just the one that you're mentioning?
No, the entire site is developed at the moment. It's got blacktop, it's parking lot, it's three buildings, about 20,000 square feet existing. So we're adding to the green space, we're not taking anything out.
There might be some junky things on the...
An olive tree or something.
That don't belong, that might be on the ferry perimeter, but I would imagine that you would clean that up and...
That's junk, we... Yeah.
And I'm...
I only know there is a really big tree at the back of the parking lot.
The back of the parking lot? It might not be on their property.
Wow.
There are a lot... There's village property back there, and there are quite a few trees.
Okay, maybe part of the green belt.
While we're on landscaping, I'll give Kathy a break to take a breather. But I... There was some question about the Nissa Silvatica being planted so close to the septic treatment. And I know... I'm sorry. I just have a question. You swapped it out for non-native plant material. I know it's not a requirement, it's just an ask, because the plants that you did swap it out for, rather than a Nellie Stevens holly, you could use an American holly where...
What I'd like to hear is what you would suggest.
You know, in my mind, if you can go 2/3 native for the whole project, and you have 1/3 to kind of play with hydrangeas and other things that are not native, but kind of endemic to Southampton. But to take out a native and go all non-native, that's a very simple change, but just put American hollies instead of the Nellie Stevens hollies, and just little tweaks like that would go a long way for me.
Little tweaks like that, that's good, that's very specific, and anything else you want.
The plant list in the planting plan is great, because I think it's more than 2/3 native, which is fabulous. It's just, in that instance, it was like a scar almost on your beautiful landscape plan, so...
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And then a note. Okay. The next comment, and this is something that is... The project is consistent with zoning. It doesn't need to have a rear yard setback, but there is not any setback on the eastern property line, you know, where they're moving to the property. And that's always concerning, even though it's permitted by zoning.
Village Business District, you know, all over the Village Business District.
This is a different property, but so I just, you know, it is... It's like I said, it doesn't require a variance, but it's, in this case, it just doesn't seem like there's a need to go lot line to lot line, so...
There is a need. There is a need. And it has to do with running the septic line from the front building to the back building. We need that extra setback in the front, which is actually, we're giving more than the zoning code allows. We literally have to go to ZDA because in the Village Business District, the front setback cannot be more than 3 feet from Varadian Way, the whole things. So we have to do 9 feet in order to accommodate the septic line. So we actually have to go to ZDA to ask for a greater setback in the front. And there... And to do another 10 feet on the back would completely skew the number of units that you bid out of it and the viability of the project.
It's just the two new buildings that back up completely. It's the rest of it, I think, will appear.
Yeah, it's just, you know, when you're constructing something right on the property line, so I guess there would have to be, you know, I guess you have to get agreements from the property owner to be able to access their property.
I'm not sure that it has to be accessed even during the construction process, which...
What about for maintenance?
How do the other buildings in the village do it? I guess they work it out with their neighbor. You know, in the Village Business District, there are tons of buildings that are at zero lot line.
Building number four looks like it's about 6 feet off of the property line. So that was my only reason for asking. Now, it looks like somebody thought about leaving enough space to walk around the building on their own property, but if it's going to...
Building four, it looks like it has...
It's an existing building.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And not changing much.
No.
No, I know it's not changing, but it is a little bit off of the property line.
Not enough that you could get someone in there to do anything?
Yeah, it looks like... What's the scale on this?
You've got a building right up against the property line there. So I don't know who's going to squeeze in 5 feet. And there's a number of other windows. Well, you don't have any windows.
Right, it's just it'll be the back of the building. Like you said, not unprecedented, but a concern.
Where did the 10 feet come from? Is it possible to do a couple of feet, or no, you're saying that...
A couple of feet doesn't get to what you want. You can't maintain a building, you can't put up a ladder, you can't get a man in there. It's... And don't forget, the neighbor has the right to be on a zero lot line. He's in the Village Business, if he comes in for redevelopment. So, you know...
My old Mercedes dealer.
My old Mercedes dealer.
Okay, um, the next thing is has to do with the way this, um, hotel, the hotel most is operating as, um, almost an expansion of the existing Southampton Inn, sharing staff and so forth. Um, so in consideration of that, the approval in way is tied to the existing Southampton Inn. And so it is a little concerning that in future, if this property were to be sold separately, that there wouldn't be enough parking because you have a lot of employees, for instance, that are not looking at Southampton Inn. Um, so they seem tied to me. They are tied in a way, at least for the parking requirements. So, uh, just wanted to consider how this would, um, this approval could have some kind of a condition that would consider that in the future, if, if this were to be sold separately.
Yeah, well, maybe I'll suggest to my clients that perhaps a condition that if they're, if they are no longer to be used in conjunction with each other, they'll come back or make an application. I mean.
That makes sense. You might have to lose some units or something to, you know, to be able to provide, you know, like, how they could get additional parking space.
I'll talk to my clients about that.
Um, next is that, um, the, because radian way is a, is a village right of way, um, the, the guest drop off zone is, is something that would need to be approved by the Board of Trustees. Um, if it needs to be marked or so forth, um, so that it could be, you know, informally, it's a guest drop off zone, but, um, can't stripe it or have it as a drop off zone if, um, without the Board of Trustees.
Were you planning to actually stripe, like, do some sort of a striping or something?
We know it has to go to the village. I rather thought it would go to the highway department and the village engineer. I mean, it's not our road to strike. I mean, we're, we're that. It's not our road to put, it's not our road to put up signs or to strike or, it's a village road, but I, I sort of thought I would be going through highway. Um, but, um, there's no, there's no question that we have to work that out with the people who own the road.
Um, I did want to ask, and this is sort of a question about, um, how you see this working in the future with the, the buildings three and four where the apartments are and the parking. You would think that it would be behind them in that, in the first parking lot.
Right.
Um, is there any thought to putting a signage that would restrict that parking for residents only overnight or something like that? Um, so that way, when people are coming home from work, they have a place to park. Um, so it's something to consider. I know that will be shared parking because during the day, a lot of the commercial use in the offices, but, I just know that if I'm coming home from work, I want a place to park. So, and I don't want to have to park all the way back there. Um, and then there's same, the same as far as the refuse, um, the, the refuge storage area for the entire development. It is back in the corner on the northeast corner there. So, um, what, what, you know, how are we going to manage to waste, um, refuse from buildings three and four? And that might relate to how it is done now, that I don't see anything.
It's next to the proposed elevator.
That's right.
Okay.
There is, yeah, it's next to the proposed elevator on, on the front building.
Okay. Great. All right, so those are the ones that we identified and, you know, that was like a mile high view and going through the plans. But I expect, I mean, these are, you know, very responsive to plans. I'm sure I should start with that. The, the village, the village engineer had a couple of questions about like where the drainage pipes were like shown on the plans that were, but I can't read his plan. So he printed them out and they're very fuzzy. Um, I think he's working from home.
You mean the engineer?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the engineer, yeah. Um, something to do with the drainage pipe through the open cellar, which I don't, I don't understand, so I'll ask him tomorrow about that.
Okay.
Um, please coordinate and detail how a drainage pipe runs through a building as shown on sheet C3200. So I can give you these little notes and maybe, but you can. Um, and then the, um, the width of the van lane, the accessible, that has to be, you know, that scales to less than. That was another comment, the village engineer.
Same thing, why?
Yeah. And, you know, it might be that you use, um, maybe put both of the ZDA parking, uh, spaces on the same side. And then you can share the, the van access line. So maybe that would fit. And that would be better anyway to have between handicap physical spaces.
So, um, I mean, obviously we're, we're anxious to get to a place where we're scheduled in the public hearing. Because we know we're going there. Um, uh, is there any way that we could schedule a public hearing or for June 5th or whatever it was?
I would say yes, because we're so, I feel like we're getting there and the, and it would be advantageous to get the public input on this now.
That, that would be great, because you don't have to have it all sealed up and finished, you know, it's, it's about getting public in, yeah, so.
We will have it all scaled up and finished.
We will have it scaled up.
Well, there, you know, there's always thing there would, I mean, a big project. A big project like this, you're always going to have things that are, you know, like, the village engineer has a bunch of drainage questions, like, they can be resolved later.
Right.
The SWIP will be required.
Of course.
As, you know, because this is in the Lake Agalom.
No, we know that.
Right, so that would be a condition that could be dealt with later, that it doesn't have to hold up all of the, all of the site plan, right.
SWIP is generally done when there's, uh, as part of the building.
Right, as, as a condition before you get the building permit.
Yes.
And then, um, you know, because they have to do inspections during construction and file with the state.
Yeah.
Alice, am I missing anything?
Our, our engineer, grocery, PW Grocery is, is working on SWIP. They know for a while.
Yep.
No, I, I think it's prudent to schedule a public hearing now as well.
Okay, great. So if we could schedule that for June 6th, um, we'll, we'll, we'll keep, uh, feeding you information. We'll keep revising our plans accordingly and make them available for the public, you know, in the office by the 6th, and I'll get my notices out and.
I, I have a request. These, the scale of these plans is very hard to read. Some of the smaller print is.
I'm sorry, that's what, uh, Jackie asked for. So you want full size?
Well, it, maybe.
No, I mean, I mean, we really do need to have full size if you're going to have paper copies. Now, you don't all need to take them out. You can have the digital version, but if you want.
Maybe one for the office?
There's the size of a full size, just so you know, and it's.
Is it 24 by 30?
Yeah.
You don't want that?
Well, you know, I, truthfully, I don't know if we need it for all the architectural stuff.
It's expensive. It's expensive.
I know.
To do it in the files, so.
Right. Is it that size in the file?
So this is, this is two sets of it from December. Okay, just the December version.
Oh, well, this, we submitted two sets, signed, sealed and everything of this, this April.
Okay, if it's in the office, I'll, I'll.
It's in the office.
Get my magnifying out and what I can't figure out, I'll go to the office.
We'll give you what you want. If you want more of these submitted, uh, just say the word.
I, I don't want to waste the paper either, but this is really hard. Even if you could send it to me digitally, I can work with it better that way.
Oh, yes, I can, but they, they don't want me to do that. They say, so that if, you know, you, you want to be sure that you're looking at the same thing. Yeah, village has on record, so if you, you can ask, uh, Jackie. Jackie has digital.
Okay.
Kathy has digital. They can forward it to you. I'm happy to forward it to you, but I've been asked not to do that.
I'm sorry.
We have it, we have it in the Dropbox.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and if you, I mean, if you do want a full set, you're going to pull out your scale and you want to look at all this stuff, then, you know, um, you know, you certainly have the rights to request an extra set or even just, you could say, I only need sheets X, Y, Z, you know? Right, because some of them you don't necessarily need to scale off.
Frankly, when I look at it at my desk, I have these sheets in front of me, and then you can zoom in on the computer if you need to. Yeah. Is this, you can't even see it.
No, I know.
Okay, so June, oh, maybe we're going to have a resolution.
Oh, yes. Um, so I would like to make a resolution that we schedule a public hearing on our June 6th meeting, 2022, for, um, Seventy One Hill Street LLC.
And may I just say, can we still leave this on for the next meeting also? Even though we've scheduled the public hearing so that we can continue to move ahead.
Yeah, I would.
On the work, on the work session, yes. Yeah, on the work session.
That's why we've combined our meetings.
Thank you very much.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Yes.
Second the motion, all second it.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay. Approved and answered. Thank you. Okay.
We will do our best to get this report out. I mean, it's just, it's a lot.
It's a big one, I know.
Yeah, so. Um, I think that Alice and I will be cut to the village attorney on the workforce, but that, you know, again, that's something that will be addressed before the CEO's office, which, so it could be a long time away. It's just, we need to figure out how administration. So, but yeah, we'll, we'll follow up on that.
And we can't do a workforce housing in perpetuity. There has to be a regulatory period of time. It just.
Hey, I'll let you suggest it then.
Thank you all very much. It's nice to see you in person, even unmasked. Thank you, Pat.
Okay, I just have a quick question. Does the, um, camera pick up the people speaking at the podium and the people in the audience?
Yeah, the Zoom people can't see, but I added it in later.
Okay.
I'm doing it all back here.
Thanks. Okay, number three, public hearing, next meeting, next meeting. We're waiting, number four, Southampton Shopping Center, 11, 111 Main Street, waiting for additional information.
I gave you his pictures. Yeah, pictures.
Yeah, I have, we have pictures. That's, um, I think our issue with that is the road that goes across the front of it, but we'll.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from the applicant, so it's still incomplete.
And I'm going quickly, but if anybody has questions, just stop me and say, and, um, heart of the Hamptons.
There was a request to adjourn to the next meeting, so.
All right, so no work session issues on that right now.
Um, so there's a, there's a memo on the file, so, um, anybody who's interested can boil that, um, on us. And, uh, there was additional information forwarded from ZDA. To neighbors. Be sure we're here.
Okay.
The volume moved up for Mr. Morovina.
Yes.
And then the next item is really, it's not on the agenda, but it was the, the formal adoption of planning board policies. Did you all see that? Um, which is basically all the things that are on the bottom of the agenda.
Excuse me, we didn't get a motion though to adjourn on Heart of the Hamptons, or do I not, was that from the last meeting? I didn't have that.
From the last meeting?
No, 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 it's, what do you do? It still would be tonight, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Adjournment to, um, May 16th.
For another meeting, yeah.
Okay, I'd like to move that we adjourn any discussion on 44, whoops, Heart of the Hamptons, 44 Meeting House Lane, until our May 16th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so has the rest of the board, do you like our new agenda layout? Do you feel that it's informative? Anything you want to add?
It's an, A, it's an improvement. B, we're still dealing with, in, in my view, a yet to be complete building department. C, Kathy is swamped, and so the stuff that comes through her is, as she's the first to admit, held up. We, I can't believe the volume that was presented this afternoon on all this stuff. It's just, you know, timing is, and so if we're guilty of delay, we've got people, we can blame Putin on it, but, you know, we are.
This board is not guilty of any delay, if, if people are submitting things three hours before a meeting, so.
But the, the record, if this is on the record, I would like to explain to the public that the meeting, everyone's doing their best, but we are the victims of, of delay that's under, under correction. So I, I just think we need to state that, because people, arts could say, why don't you guys pull up your socks and let's get to it?
I think we're dealing with everything that we can that's before us and complete. So I'm specifically talking about our, you know, the, the planning board policies and procedures, just to sort, this was done to.
The new deal is an improvement.
Educate and help make things clearer to the public, so that people aren't showing up thinking that a work session is a public hearing and vice versa, so I think it's a, a great addition, and I like the way it's worded, so.
You want us to approve it?
I, if you all agree, I would love to approve it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the new procedure. Great.
I'll second it. I'll, I'll second it.
Aye.
Good idea.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you Kathy and Alice for doing this for us. Um, I guess that's it. I don't have any other business to discuss.
Minutes, um, they're not on here, but we have the minutes from April 4th.
Fourth, I think. And, and Alan, you took a look at those, right?
Yeah, so I, I, I got held up by coming back, but they're, they're in. The, and she, she's got them and the.
Should we wait to approve?
We got revisions back. I, I. I did, I accepted all of them. I took, I have Alan's provisions, Kathy's and, um, Alice's as well, and Willa as well.
Yes.
Okay.
You did it well. I was, I was on the boat, so I had to catch up and do it.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't judge it fast enough.
So I'd like to move that we accept the, um, meetings for the April 4th meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
And we can't do the April 18th, right?
Um, I just have to accept it. Kathy, it was just that one note on the special exemption. I have to send those out to the board, so we can't approve them just yet.
Okay. Anything else?
I'll move that we adjourn.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.